All right, thank you. We're ready to resume our meeting. For the record, it was moved and second that we end the executive session. No decisions were made, no votes taken. Mr. Woods moved and Ms. Plato second motion that was unanimous. Based on the conversations, we're asking the administrator, entertain a motion to ask the administrator to draft a letter in support of the further study of the project Wild Turkey as presented to us and that regular updates will be provided to this council based on the progress of that project.
May I have the chair, ma'am, make a motion?
All right. It's been moved and second that we support or provide a supporting letter for further study of Project Wild Turkey as presented by Dr. Wagner Northeastern Technical College. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hands. Thank you, it's unanimous. Now approval of our minutes for the September 10th regular council meeting.
I move that we accept the minutes.
Second.
As it has written.
All right. It's been moved and second that we accept the minutes for the September 10th regular council meeting. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you. Before we start with old business, we need to update. We need to add item 3B needs to be amended that the ordinance has been renamed. Ordinance 789 has been renamed. I think in our previous meeting it had a different title and this is the updated name for that document that's being prepared. So, I'll entertain a motion.
To move.
All right. It's been moved and second that we amend ordinance 789 title to reflect the new title which was changed from the one at the last meeting. I think I've got that right, Ms. Bundy. All right, thank you. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you. All right, old business. An ordinance to amend the building code ordinance to adopt the latest and future additions of the building, fire, plumbing, mechanical, gas, electrical, energy and residential codes as mandated by the State of South Carolina Building Code Council. Second reading. Any changes or updates you want to give us, sir?
No changes. Just some updates.
All right, thank you.
Whatever for you.
Got you. So we'll be in compliance.
Yes.
All right. Questions? Yes, sir.
Motion.
Motion? You move?
Second.
And it's been moved and second that we accept second reading for ordinance 788. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hands. Thank you. Now ordinance 3B, 789. An ordinance to establish Marlborough County Personnel Policies and Procedures. Second reading. And Ms. Sumter is coming forward. She asked that each of you receive one of these documents. Bedtime reading, Ms. Sumter. All right. Thank you all of you. I got you.
What you have right here is a draft of the new Personnel Policy Manual which we ask that you review and after upcoming work session we would discuss in detail the changes from our old policy to new policy and any other additions that you all may want to make.
All right, great. Is that it? All right, thank you. All right. So, are we approving second reading?
What we're asking is for you to approve second reading and then, yeah, as you know, the chair has called a work session for the 28th.
Got you, 28th, yes.
And at that time we'll have you where you can look and say, "This is something we already had, it's just in a different place" and discuss things that are changes for council to discuss.
Right, because it's not highlighted what's been amended, changed.
No, it is confusing to us, so I am sure it's confusing to you all. It's a lot of words and we need to match them up with what we had.
But there's so much going on, so I know this is a comprehensive document. So as the administrator said, we do have a call meeting that's already been advertised or will be advertised for October 28th. At what time, ma'am?
4:30.
4:30, all right. So, all in favor of approving second reading of ordinance 789 which is our updated Personnel Policy Manual?
To move.
All right. It's been moved and second that we approve second reading of this document and be prepared to make any further recommendations at our call meeting on the 28th. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hands. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Sumter. We appreciate your hard work. It's much needed so that everybody's informed, everybody's interest is protected. All right, new business. Ordinance 790, authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes and special source revenue credit amendment by and between Marlborough County and an industry to be identified later with respect to certain economic development properties in the county whereby such property will be subject to certain fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes including the provision of certain special source revenue credits and other matters related thereto. This is first reading and title only and I think you all are working on that. You want to add anything to that?
No, it's just, you know, as we typically do, we get the reading started and we'll have more information. But it's a positive thing, it's more capital investment in the county, so it's a good thing.
Wonderful, good to hear that. Entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and second that we approve ordinance 790 in title only. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hands. Thank you. All right. Next, funding request to expand Marty's service to the Wallace area. And I like that word, "expand." That means that this program is working and is expanding or growing. Thank you, sir, make some comments.
Yes, ma'am. As you know, we've had a fair amount of success with the Marty bus route here and there is a need for it in the Wallace area. And so, in order to start moving in that direction, there's been a proposal made to expand into the Wallace area for the on-demand or the requested service so someone can call and they'll come get them or schedule that. It will not be a full-blown bus, it'll start out with a smaller bus, but we hope this is a start of another route and maybe even a connection to Chesterfield County. But so the cost of this, to do this expansion is $2,000 a year for three years. If you remember, there's federal, there are federal Transportation Authority funds to do this program, so it's really good for the partners like us to not put a whole lot of money in it, get a lot out of it. And this money would come out of the economic development budget and we've checked and can make that work with existing budget.
All right. Do we need to approve the expenditure?
Yeah, like a boat, yeah.
All right.
Madam Chair, with a dump, with a permanent brick just celebrating their 100 year anniversary, I think this would be something that would help them for workers getting there, so I'm excited for it to actually be able to expand in the Wallace area. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve funding requests for $2,000 for three years.
All right.
Second.
It's been moved and second that we approve this request to expand the Marty service at the amount of $2,000 for the next three years. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hands. Thank you. All right. Performance to boards and commissions, do we have any? All right, then we'll start with an EMS update. Mr. Watts, thank you.
Evening.
Yes.
Give your quick update now and clear report.
Okay.
Have you come up yet?
Not yet.
Everyone should have a copy in front of them. Probably a big work off.
Just again, wanted to give a quick update as to what emergency medical services we've been doing for the task force. So, through September 30th, our response volume, 1,400 responses, 1,404. So that's about 16 a day and just under 1,000 transporters. About 69% of the patients that we encounter in transport are lost. So that would jump by 10 a day with that. The types of responses, this is B, so it's sick person driving accident and respiratory distress, which has been introduced as well. But these are the top 20 and I hope on your slide it's big enough that you can see it. Our transport estimation, one of the things that we look at very closely is how the, how we, where we're working. And so Scott Memorial and Larnburg is certainly the largest only by a few percentage points, so I think they're about 42% and McLeod Shore is 35, 36%. So, McLeod, Dillon, Florence and then other places as well. But that's kind of where we are there. Response times, that's measured from dispatch to arrival on the scene. So the time we get the call until the time we arrive on the scene. Our goal is 80% in less than 12 minutes. We continue to improve with that, we're making 78% in less than 12 minutes and, you know, with that, you also look at average response times, but as I've said before, average is like when put in boiling water, when put in ice water, on average, you're pretty comfortable. So, we, less than nine minutes, last month, we were a little bit longer than that, about 9:33, but we are still, continue to improve with response times. When we compare that to the task force report from December of 2018, the average at that time was 11 minutes and 14 seconds. And like I say, we're just about nine minutes now and the old performance at 15 minutes was about 76% and we're making 88, 89% in less than 15 minutes. So, very happy with that performance.
Definitely.
We do have a few continuing issues. You know, we still have open paramedic positions. Paramedics are hard to find, y'all. They just are hard to find. And so we continue to recruit. We continue to look at different ways that we can recruit. We're continuing to use a combination of full-time, part-time, overtime, all of those things. And, you know, our fourth unit is kind of mandated to be staffed at the advanced DMT level. We're actually staffing it to the paramedic level a lot of the time, so that seems to be working out even better. And then, I guess the last time I talked to you guys in July, maybe the last of July, we were having, we were losing some unit hours because of a spare unit. And so since then, we have gotten another spare unit and so now we actually have two spare units and we'll be in service by the middle of this month. It's not been inspected yet, but very happy with that performance also. So with that, I'll open it up for any questions that you may have.
Well, I'm very happy to have this report and to see that you're making progress and that response time for this new service is well under previous, so that should be of interest and comfort to our citizens. So thank you very much. I know it's hard getting a new startup off the ground.
Yes, ma'am.
You all have done a tremendous job, we appreciate that.
Thanks so much. And please know that it's not Brian that's doing that. You know, there's 30 employees that's getting that job done. I go to bed every night.
All right, thank you. Yes, indeed. All right. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Chair, members of council, for the month of September, expenditures were at 23% of the budgeted amount and this is slightly under budget for this point in the fiscal year. As you can see from the graphs, revenues are trending consistently with prior fiscal years and of course should increase over the next few months as we begin to receive property tax revenue. Our annual financial audit is progressing well. The auditors were with us for two weeks in September doing fieldwork and gathering information. They visited several departments, asked lots of questions and that kind of thing. But they seem to be on track with the timely completion of the fiscal year 19 audit. One of the items that we discussed a good bit while they were here was the lost credit. The county auditor and the treasurer and staff have worked with our external auditors and decided that an additional $400,000 will be able to be given back to the taxpayers on the upcoming tax bills. And of course, this will show on each tax bill as a credit to reduce the total amount owed on that bill. Are there any questions?
Will our tax bills also have a pie chart showing which percentage for each department or whatever?
They will.
Is it going to be in color or black and white? Just out of curiosity.
I'm not sure, we can find out.
But as long as it's going to be there.
But it will be on there.
People will see where that money's going.
Yes, ma'am.
And you said the lost credit amount was $400,000?
$400,000 extra.
Wow, gotcha.
You know, on top of what she already does.
Got you, thank you.
Yeah, I think it was, yes, I think it was $900,000 and now it's 1.4.
All right, great.
I think it was a million and, yeah, it was, I'm sorry. It was a million and now it's 1.4, yes.
Wonderful, all right.
Are there any other questions?
Good, anybody else? Thank you, ma'am. All right.
Okay, so our administrators report. First off, we always start with employee service anniversaries and this year, this week, this month, we have Kayliner with 17 years, Lee McQueen with 19 years, Ray Kelly with 19 years, DT Turner with seven years, Hosea Lemon with 12 years and Candace Pate with eight years. So we congratulate those employees on their service anniversary. Upcoming events, you can see we're continuing to volunteer to do lunches at the community kitchen. So this will be the fourth month and Ms. Bundy's leading the group and the menu will be grilled chicken and baked beans, slaw and all that kind of stuff. So I'm sure you can speak to her if you want to help out. That's been very well received and we're one of many local government types that are involved in this, so I think it's a good thing. You'll see here's some details on the Association of Counties Fall Meeting and it's in October 24th and 23rd and the deadline for getting a room is the 3rd, so please get with Ms. Bundy. If you don't already have one, she might still get you on the list. I don't know who all is interested, but those are always very productive meetings. We have our industry appreciation event this year will be at Aris Manufacturing in Clough. You know, there's a lot of interest in that and this will have members of the Economic Development Partnership and you all and some other government folks to be there and have a barbecue dinner and show our appreciation for industry. You know, it's very important that we support our existing industry. I think council has done a good job with that and we hear that, we hear that feedback from the existing industry. I did tell someone, I can't remember which one of you all, I had two different industries have a concern about us trying to recruit new industry because they're having so much trouble finding workers. And, you know, it's, it is difficult and it's good to see N E T C and others, you know, trying to help bring workforce skills along so we can start to have a bigger workforce to support new industries here. There's a flyer, I think in your packet, about a Veterans Affairs Dinner Party on the 22nd. And then on the 26th, you'll have the City of Bennettsville and the counties in with City Bennettsville. Ms. Plato's pet project, the trunk or treat event. And there's a flyer in there, nice flyer. And Ms. Plato had, there was a meeting Ms. Plato had today and we all went down there to help, to start planning on that or continue planning on that. I'm sure she'll have more here in a minute to talk about. But it looks like it's going to be a big success. We're going to start with industry appreciation. As far as we, the trash, the new trash service, we did mail out a letter and form a little question and answer kind of letter to citizens and most folks seem to have received those already from the feedback we've gotten. They did seem to be, the folks did seem to read them and had questions and we've had some calls and we tried to answer those questions. It is important for folks to know and to look at that, there's a graph on there that shows the cost, that the costs are all-inclusive. They don't, they aren't in addition to the $40 fee we had in previous years, nor are they in addition to paying the service that's now doing the trash collection in the county. For a new trash collection service, there was a lot of work done to make sure to pick one that we believe will provide good service and the amount charged for that is significantly less than what folks that have a cart now are paying for it. So we're excited about getting that in place. It's a tough task to try to get all the details worked out and we're working to do that now. We see, you'll see on here that some training has been scheduled for the new planning commission members. Mr. Donald Hamilton's arranging that. So that's a good thing. We need to have the planning commission trained and I believe he's gone in with the Bennettsville City Planning Commission to join together on that and save money and make it more efficient. As Ms. Moore mentioned, we've got some preliminary audit findings and they've been very, very positive and they continue to show the results of county councils budgets and staff's efforts to implement and manage those budgets. You know, the guy that I used to work for, David Rothberg, used to always say, "To plan your work and work your plan." And we've done our best to do that and we see those results. So we're proud of that and we anticipate a good audit from that. You did mention earlier that there's a strategic planning, a work session scheduled for October 28th. Its original intent was strategic planning, the next step of that, but there's also a few items like the personnel policy we can touch on at that time. So that's my report and I can try to answer any questions that you may have.
And will the building status be a part of our work session on the 28th?
Yes, ma'am. That's sort of the direction I felt you guys want to go and we'll have that.
Questions, comments? I'm real pleased to learn that we had a good audit and, you know, it takes a while for everybody to get acclimated to a new organization. But this shows that as a team, a council, that we take our job very seriously about how and when we spend taxpayers' money and that we are good stewards of that because we know how people struggle to pay their taxes and that we are certain services, we are mandated by the state without funding, but we find a way to do the best we can for our citizens. So I commend the administrative finance director in your department in doing this job and working with the auditors. And I'm thankful that each of the council members really took the hard out strategic planning process. Without that plan, we wouldn't know when to spend the money or how to spend the money and that when you have a plan, it makes everything easy. We just don't decide, oh, we want to do X, Y and Z tomorrow. But we make sure that everything we did fitted with our strategic plan and we budgeted the money appropriately, whether it was this year or next year or whatever. I think the way we work together proves that we care about county government and our citizens. So thank you very much to you two and your people for this report. It's always good to know that the money is being spent wisely. I guess some of us need to take that on a personal level, but I'll start with me on that one. Reputation of citizens request before council? We don't have any tonight. And we'll start with you, Mr. Odom. Do you have comments to share?
Yes, everything's good in my area. I did have a call this morning from Terry Jordan, Mr. Plant Manager at Graceland Homes or Graceland Builders, excuse me. They build a little small buildings. If you're going from McCall towards Larnburg, the little buildings out on the north side of McCall, those are some of the Graceland's buildings. And they have just taken over another region and presently and since they came into operation, they build like 50, 60 buildings a week and they're going to start building 120 a week. So they're in dire need of carpenters, painters and Mr. Jordan said he also needs right now two CDL drivers to move the buildings. Once they build those, those buildings are sold before they ever build them. So when they, you see them out on these trucks, they're already sold and have been paid for them. So their business is expanding and it's good. It's good for the county, good for the McCall area. We have a lot of people that have good skills in carpenter work and painting and, you know, the number is 523-5502. It's been uploaded to Facebook, so we have anyone interested in doing it, they're looking for good ambitious workers. That's it.
All right, good.
I just want to thank the staff for all the report and we, citizens always appreciate our state care of their money. That's what they trust us and I'm glad to know that we hit it in the right direction and I think they see that too. So I want to thank the staff for that.
I'm just glad that we can extend the Marty service up into the Wallace area. I'm hoping that's going to be a tool that people take advantage of and use and use it and be able to get to work in different places, hospital, well, not hospital, we got EMS for that, but doctors offices. And so hopefully that's going to be a good thing for Wallace. That was in the original plan, it just had to get the other one and so we're now successful, we're going to move to the Wallace area, so that's a good thing. The other thing is we had a call in Wallace, I think everybody knows about, last Tuesday with three individuals from the high school. One young girl lost her life. And so that's pretty tragic for three kids in one community to be in the same wreck. So y'all continue to remember them in prayer. I was not at the call, but I did hear that there was agencies from Chesterfield County, from Wallace, Marlborough EMS, Marlborough County Rescue, Bennettsville Fire Department. Said all the agencies work well together, so that was good to hear. You notice that everybody worked for the patient and that's what it's supposed to be about. So, you know, I was just, I was glad to hear that. So continue to remember them. I think they have a service Saturday at Wallace School for that young child. So y'all remember them.
And I think they were all from the same family. Brother, sister, cousin.
Brother, sister, cousin.
Yes. And they've started a GoFundMe page or whatever you do to help those families. It's a lot of expense back and forth to hospitals, it's real sad. Yes, sir.
Well, I'd like to commend Brian Watts for a good job he's doing with EMS and Ron and your staff for the work doing with the trash service. Thank you all.
Ms. Plato?
Let me go first, because you're too long. Everything in Clough is doing well. Chordram, a load, load thing. I can't go behind Chordram today, no, not today. But everything in Clough is doing well.
How was the cotton festival?
Cotton festival, there was so much going on this weekend.
Thank you.
The first weekend in October, it was, everybody was doing something. Homecoming at Calfield, Mastoni had something, Sycamore State had something, the cotton festival going on. There was a lot going on, so, but all in all, the weather was pleasant. And everybody know, you know, that Saturday was good, that for everybody. That chord is all you. I tell you, I'm sure it quit. I can't go behind you.
Ms. Plato?
Okay. I'd like to say to Mr. Munnell and all the staff and Ms. Bundy and everybody here and Ms. Sumter on the job well done that y'all do for the county. We really appreciate it. And you too, Mr. Lawyer. We appreciate everything you do. What I want to say is that everybody is aware of the trunk or treat that's coming up, October the 26th. And I'm looking forward to having a great time there with everybody and the people that's working with us. And I'm looking for, I want my county council members to back me up 100%. That's what I'm looking for. And I don't want y'all to let me down, okay? I want you to put in with me to help me get this down the road. And I just want everybody to support it. I have some applications here for a person if they want to put a car. I learned today, Mr. Munnell, what did the lady say? That you don't even have to go through the trouble of trying to fix your car. You can go on, what she said? She said you can go, if something, you can go on and order the kit and then just set it in the back of the car. Orianna trade. You don't have to go, yeah, you can just order this kit and just set it in the back of the car. You don't have to run around trying to figure out what you're going to fix and how you're going to do it. You just order it, put it in the car. You just order it, put it in the car, throw you some candy in there, you can go.
Are you having, are you having yours in?
Yeah.
Are you wearing a costume?
No, I wear my costume every day. But I'm looking forward to everybody to really come and participate, we're going to have a great time, and Mr. Munn is on board with it, and Mr. McQueen was at the meeting today, and I think, I really think it's going to be great, and I think we can grow on it because if it's good this year, people want to come back and do it again next year, and we might can draw some more people, so I'm hoping it's going to be really good. I got my fingers crossed, I'm praying, and I'm hoping it's going to work.
It will.
And I'm not going to let Mr. Doris off the hook, because I got something I want you to help me with too.
Uh-oh.
Okay? All right.
Sheriff?
Yeah, and Sheriff too.
Sheriff, would you like to make comments, sir?
Madam Chair, councilman, administrator, I'd just like to say I appreciate the work that y'all do individually and as a team, and I appreciate that. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. We appreciate the work for your officers too. One thing that wasn't mentioned that was also last Saturday, they had a fly-in of vintage airplanes, and I was there early on, and by the time I left, there were like maybe nine or 10 planes. It was just remarkable, and certainly of interest to me, I've always wanted to learn how to fly a plane, but I think I'll pass for some other things that I have on my plate, but that was really interesting, and like Mr. Woods say, you know, people say there's nothing to do, there's always something good to do in Bennettsville or in the county, you just have to keep up with things that are advertised on our Facebook page, on the city's Facebook page, in the newspaper, and word of mouth. So you know, maybe a small town, but there's always good things, good things to be done by the family. I want to echo the sentiments of Mr. Steen about the tragedy, and it kind of put a dapper on Homecoming, but I know the Marlborough County High School family is very resilient, and they pulled together to weather this storm, and it'll be better. EMS, thank you, sir, we, six months in, we're doing well, considering we're a new startup, so thank you, sir. And the trash, I also had some calls, people are just concerned, and I know that that's going to work, and we all worked hard for that, and we're going to see a cleaner Marlborough County. This afternoon, I participated in a STEM demonstration at Bennettsville Intermediate School, and it's a, we all know STEM stands for science, technology, engineering, and math, and it's targeted at, this program is targeted at 4th, 5th, and 6th grade students, and they're learning problem-solving skills using hands-on activities like remote-controlled drones and other robots, or B-bots they called, they're called, and Ms. Huff was there, it was quite interesting, but it prepares our students for global economy, because they're just not going to be competing for jobs and skill sets locally, and the superintendent is looking forward to maybe having this implemented in all the schools at some point, all the way through high school, so it was fun. So little competition going on with the 4th grader, I think she beat the socks off of me, but that was all right. It was interesting, and you catch them while they're young, and they, it becomes a part of their DNA, they're used to it, so they would excel in that, and the technology, technology is going, it is the wave of the future, so I'm very pleased to know that our school is finally catching up with what's going on, and that our students can do this just like anybody else. With that said, I would like to conclude this meeting, thank you all so much, and we'll see you on the 28th for our work session. Thank you. Meeting adjourned. All right. Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Good man.
Yeah, always.